We're going to go ahead and get started. I know that we are already a few moments late. We are in the middle right now this week, some of you might not know it, is the Transportation Summit. So it's our 14th Annual Transportation Summit. So a number of the council members are actually over at the Omni Mandalay Hotel hosting a number of out-of-state, actually even out-of-the-country elected officials and guests right now who are speaking about all sorts of transportation issues from roadways to flights and airline transportation to high-speed rail lines and even handling, you know, waterways in our ports. So we forgive you for having a relatively small number of us here this evening. But we do want to thank all of you. It's good to see some very familiar faces in the audience. The point of these town hall meetings, in the past, people have been able to come to the council meeting and ask questions, but they are basically talking almost to a wall, it seems. The city council doesn't respond during council meetings to questions directly, and we usually have staff follow back up. So we thought it might be interesting if, instead of always just having staff follow back up with you, if you had an opportunity to come to an open town hall meeting and address any of the council members that you wish with questions and have us actually be able to give you some answers. So tonight is not a time for us to get up and talk and give you presentations. It's really an opportunity for the citizens to be able to speak directly with your elected officials and get some answers to any questions or concerns or ideas that they have. And so with that, we're going to open it up to the floor. We're asking people to please limit your questions and comments to about two minutes each. I think they're going to have a really loud bell that's somewhat obnoxious, so if you can hit that 1:58 and stop, that's even better before that bell goes off. We're going to, we'd like you to address your comments to the council. A couple of occasions, we've addressed questions to the audience. We just want to make sure that it stays up here. The interactions between the council and audience members, whatever you guys want to do after this is over, feel free, but during these next hour and a half, we'd like the interaction between the stage and the floor. And if we can please, please keep personal attacks or comments to yourselves, please. I know, we hate to say that, but just in case, just want to make sure we lay that out. So who would like to kick off? Who's got a question? There's a microphone there and there's a microphone there. If anybody can just go ahead and step up. And Susan, did you have the questions that were written out yet, or ...? Okay.
I don't think you're, I don't think it's on.
Are you there?
There you go.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Ann Marie Sherbin. Excuse me. I live on Santa Fe, here in Irving. One of the things I wanted to ask is, since we haven't gotten the rainfall, I was wondering if anybody had proposed gray water to supplement the water that we're having to do without and also to save. I had mentioned it to some of the apartment residents that were more than happy putting a bucket in the shower, or when you wash your dishes, take that soap, water, it won't hurt anything, it will help the soil, foundation around your house, your trees, flushing your toilet. There's a number of things you can do with gray water that a lot of people don't even realize, and it will be a major help to this drought.
That's a good idea.
The apartment manager couldn't say, because I guess of liability, they didn't want to say, yes, we back this, so it's just kind of grassroots, I guess you would call it. And we'd like to know if anybody had considered that whatsoever, or putting something out to people, because they don't realize how much water they use. Even when you're brushing your teeth, put a small bowl in there, that water adds up tremendously, and it would be a great idea to bring it forth. I don't think most people even know or realize what gray water is.
That's a good point. Thank you for coming up. It's interesting that you mentioned that because on, I was just looking here on my calendar, on August 18th, at the West Irving Library, you're going to have a class about gray water. Because it is something, it is something that's being looked at more today. Obviously, when I was a kid, well, when I was a kid growing up, our washing machine just ran into the yard.
Right.
And that was very common. Well, the, all the ordinances changed, and of course, that wasn't allowed anymore. So we had to plummet into the ground, so it went down into the sewer system. But the green initiatives there, that are going on, obviously, we realize that gray water definitely has a place in our city. In a lot of different cities, there's a lot of organizations and things like that are looking at that more often, because water is going to be, our population is going to increase, and water is going to be at a premium, or hopefully not. But I don't know if that answers your question, but I know citywide, I know we are looking at it, and it is something, so it, on this, at 6 o'clock at the West Irving Library on August 18th, they will talk about gray water, and that is going to be a city class that will be put on.
Is it a city class?
Yes, yes. So if you, and I don't have the number, but if you called the West Irving Library and inquired about that, there may have to be a registration, because it may be limited to a number of people. But it would give you an opportunity to learn more about gray water and the future of, you know, what we're going to do with gray. It's going to be more acceptable to do that. Now, you said you were an apartment dweller?
Yeah, and the reason they didn't want to ask the residents was because of a liability issue.
And those are something, those would be a question that you could ask there, because I know we are kind of butting up against what current ordinances say, where you can't do that. So those are things, and all of those types of things are going to come before the city council probably in the next five or 10 years, when you start seeing windmills show up, and it's already hit communities when you're looking at solar panels on roofs of houses and things like that, that typically would not be acceptable. But now we're having to learn that we have to accept those sort of things to take advantage of some renewable resources. Does that, does that answer your question?
I appreciate it. I just wondered if anybody had even thought of that.
Yes, it is being thought about, so, okay.
Yes.
Just a quickie. James Childs, Irving, Texas, for sure. I do hope and pray that our council members are looking after the best interests of the citizens of Irving regarding the monies being spent on, you'll pardon expression, downtown entertainment center, please, and thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions? Come on, if you want to just step up to the microphone.
I called, same old, the same old, so, I'm trying to summarize this, or can I take three minutes?
Take your time.
Yeah.
Susan, just make sure that beep is really soft.
My name's Mike Overby, and I'm the owner of Express Employment Professionals here in Irving. And I'd like to just make a recommendation, I don't know if it deserves an answer, but a recommendation concerning the strategic plan for this year. Just a bit of background, this is what I was going to cut out. I had been in corporate management, you know, before buying Express Employment Professionals eight years ago. I was a vice president with American Express for nine years, I was a, I'm sorry, 14 years. Was a consultant with Ernst &amp; Young for nine years, and then a vice president with Excel Communications. So VSMs degree in engineering, registered professional engineer. So I say all that to say that, when it comes to strategic planning, I kind of tend to look at things from a business perspective, and I'll have to compliment the city, actually, on the Six Sigma Quality Program. You know, that is an example of public sector taking a private sector approach to reducing costs and even improving service levels, which I think with today's cost pressures, you know, everyone's facing, especially the government, it's going to take that kind of thinking out-of-the-box attitude, if you're going to be able to not raise taxes, you know, and at least continue to improve, you know, service levels to your citizens, okay? So that being said, my recommendation is for, and I've made this to the Henry Holmes meeting in the past, to you guys, the Irving Independent School District, and I usually get blank stares, like, we never thought of that. Clearly, the city of Irving, Irving Independent Schools are two of the largest employers in Irving. You know, there would be great benefits, I believe, to at least look at the feasibility of a centralized back office operation, okay? Consolidated back office infrastructure. Clearly, there are many employees, if you look at the generic areas of, you know, accounting, finance, purchasing, IT, security, HR, you know what I'm talking about, non-core functions. And, you know, if these were looked at, you know, I'm not saying implemented immediately, but look at the feasibility, I think you could probably significantly consolidate these two into one. They're common generic processes, which you can measure and have a unit cost for. At American Express, we reduced from six to three the number of, you know, major operating centers. There's customer service billing, customer service credit. We reduced costs by over a billion dollars and improved customer service. You can do it. Probably you'd immediately think, well, that's going to reduce jobs. Duh. Short-term, yes. Think long-term. If you were able to do this, create a centralized, maybe a separate group, you could have other city government, school districts, outsource these generic functions to Irving. We could be a revenue generator and create jobs in Irving. It'd be something that very few people are probably even thinking about, but I guarantee you, as things get tougher in the economic climate, somebody's going to do it. Why not be us? Okay?
One of the, one of the things, one of the things that has been accomplished, and we just approved again last week, is we work with the school district and others as far as our bid processes on vehicles and things of that nature. We actually look at the whole state. San Antonio may have an agreement that they can purchase a vehicle at a certain price, which is less than we can purchase it. We go out and look and price it, and then we look at what, who we have cooperative sharing agreements with, and then we can, if we can get a better deal, fine. If not, then we'll piggyback off of San Antonio's bids. We work with the school district on that. We also, Tommy has been work, the city manager's been working with the new superintendent to look at how they can work their purchasing departments together. You know, the only challenge we run into is mixing school money and city money, but as long as we can keep the contracts straight. But the Six Sigma Program you're talking about, Tommy's been working with the school district on that well, as well as the state. But I just wanted you to know that there is a purchase agreement on some things that the staff does work with the school district on, and that we work statewide with other cities as well. So that process has started. To your point, it probably can be increased. It's just a matter of how we draw the line so that the finances don't get, your school tax dollars and your city tax dollars don't get mixed up together.
The other thing I would add to that, and it's a great point, and I appreciate you recognizing the work that has been done, because you're right, Irving has leaned out in a lot of ways at City Hall, but we continue to look for ways to do that. We also continue to look for ways to raise revenue outside of our own taxpayers, people that come into our city and use services and do usage fees, for example. Non-Irving residents go into libraries, and what is their fee versus a resident fee? As it relates to the school district, we're talking about partnerships now, not just with the city and the district, but with the city, Irving Independent School District, and Carrollton Farmers Brand School District, which is one of the buildings we're sitting in today. And so that all of the districts that are represented in Irving can maybe collaboratively work together. And it takes some effort to do that, but we've got some people in place that I think are willing to do that. So I appreciate your comments, and one will say, you're right, and we need to keep working on it and keep working on it as things are tight. I did want to address the brown water, the gray water issue. There are other efforts in place across the city, other initiatives that we use. For example, in the Decurt area and Los Cleanes area, you know, we pump a lot of water to irrigate medians and things like that into our, into that system that are actually already brown water. We have several initiatives, but you're right, water is more and more precious every year, and we're feeling it now in a record drought. You know, we look at the city of Kemp, who has no water. We've been watching that on the news. They had a fire the other day. They literally had to carry in water to put the water out, haven't had water for days. Irving has looked forward, many years before any of us were on council, to secure water. We continue to look at water issues in our city, and it is a valuable asset that we'll continue to try to preserve, monitor, because we know that that's what's coming. I do have to say, I have to leave, actually, right now. I'm part of the, our program that's our national and international transportation summit. I'm hosting an event tonight, so I'm going to have to leave, but I appreciate everybody coming out and being able to be here to at least answer a few of the questions, but I need to get across town in time to make the meeting, so thank you very much.
Does anybody else have any questions? Yes, do you want to go ahead and get up to the microphone?
More on the subject of water. My name is Steve Adams. I'm a Valley Ranch resident here and a member of the Residential Board of Directors, and just wanted to let the lady back here know that our board is, our master board is working on the issue of gray water, working with the city on the, developing the ability to bring gray water into Valley Ranch for our irrigation. The question that I had had to do with recent state legislation, which requires homeowner associations to permit the use of solar panels and rain barrels. A homeowner's association can, cannot pass any restriction on the use of those technologies. And I'm just curious, does the-
Wait, I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I didn't understand.
The state legislature, in the past session, passed legislation that prohibits homeowner associations from preventing residents, their members, from using rain barrels and solar panels. And I'm just wondering, I'm not aware of any legislation that would affect city governments, and I'm just wondering if there's anything in the city code that would prohibit people from adopting those technologies? And if so, is there, are there steps being-
Not in the city of Irving, yeah.
Okay. So a city of Irving resident could put up solar panels and use rain barrels as long as their association permits it? Very good. Glad to hear that.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the water situation, everybody's thinking about it because of where we are. And what we've looked at is, we've, we've got what they call purple pipe, which is reused water that we're putting in, and we've got 25,000 gallons a day that are being used in the Los Cleanes area. That's the first permit. That's about a 23-year-old permit. City of Irving, that's been about four or five years ago, worked to get a permit as well for reused water. The challenge we run into, and we've looked at what it would take to connect the pipe from, from Los Cleanes, to bring it up out of the urban center through the La Valita development now, and take advantage of that, as well as into the, into the Valley Ranch area. We've also looked at what it would do to take it to the Texas Stadium site, as that's redeveloped, that 400 and some acres. And then as we redevelop 183 with their expansion, putting in a purple pipe along there as well, and then 114, and then 635. So eventually, we've got a master plan. There's a group called Allen Plumber and Associates out of Austin. We did a study with about four years ago, and we've got a process. This year, we just brought the golf course online in, that we own down in, and I can't even think the name of the golf course, but-
Twin Wells.
Twin Wells. Thanks, Gerald. Twin Wells has just come on, and that's one of the challenges we had, was that we couldn't maintain it at a certain standard, because the water restrictions that we require the citizens, we also have to abide by. So the challenge is, it's about a $20 million, or it's about a $200 million to, to a billion-dollar project when you figure all the different pieces in. And so we're trying to figure out how to incorporate a little bit each year, and, but that's one thing. Also, the, as Gerald mentioned with the Parks Department, they also have classes on rain barrels and how to collect water, and what type to use, and things of that nature. I know I haven't been involved with the Valley Ranch Association for the last couple of years, but I think there's probably a way that the association could come up with a standard of a, of a solar panel that they liked. You know, there's the metal ones you can get, they're more expensive, but they match the roof and things of that nature, and similar with the rain barrels being on the back of the house instead of the front of the house could be probably implemented.
The city's also started to use some solar panel technology. Our West Library, that we opened off of, Esters and 183, on that, if you, if you have a chance to visit it, we've got, was it 80% of all of our electric needs are being, are being, basically being fueled?
Actually, it's 100%.
100% by, by the solar technology. We have, where the parking structures are, those are all solar panels as well as on the roof. So we're even looking into how we can, how we can put that type of technology into city use. Yes.
Hi, I'm Robert Kessig, and I promised that I won't ask you about Ickley this time. I just want everyone to know.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank you for the idea of having the town halls. I know there was some criticism at City Hall the other day, and I think that when you have the public at large, you're obviously going to have some people who have their own way of behaving. So again, I want to thank you for the idea of doing it, implementing it. I think it was also great that it was done on three different dates and in three different locations, so that it gave people less chance to, to not miss it. But I wanted to ask the question, since there was so much controversy about the, apparent controversy about the entertainment center. I just wanted to ask the panel up there why they thought it was so important not to examine what took place in the past, when there were so many people that seemed to raise that issue.
Since I'm the only one here that voted that way, these two, the mayor and Gerald voted the other way, I'll give my explanation. As I said, right, wrong, or indifferent, the contracts that we had in place early on were for a certain thing to be accomplished. And as we went through the process of redoing it, again, whether it was right, wrong, or indifferent, at least a majority of the council made the decision to move forward. And on four different occasions, we amended it and extended it and things of that nature. And based on the original belief of how we could work through the process, just the review that we did was something that both parties agreed upon and how they would process through that. And so that was my reason for supporting it, was the fact that the way the contracts were written, the way we had gone through the process, and I wanted to move forward with, either we're going to do the deal, or we're not going to do the deal. There's a timeframe in place, and if the money can be put together, fine. If it can't, fine. I think we've come up with what we can support as a city. We know that we've got 40, 50 million dollars plus a few other things, 88 million dollars. We know we've got 30 million dollars we've already expended, and so we know that about 120 million dollars. We've been told 88 we could put back into the project, but I think we feel, several of us have mentioned this, that we feel more comfortable with the city putting 40 or 50 million into it and the developer putting the bulk of the, of the dollars into it. And I appreciate the mayor causing the discussion on it, because we've gone from a situation where the city was putting 200 million dollars and the developer was putting 50 million dollars into it, to a position today where we're putting 50 million dollars into it and the developer's putting 200 million dollars into it.
Is there a person of responsibility at the city that's the direct focal point that I raised the other night at the city council meeting before you made the vote, that's managing the project on behalf of the city? Remember, I was talking about PERT and CPM?
Sure.
Where you see where you are, you know, whether you're ahead, behind on the, on the tasks, and also with the money. Because it would seem to me, if there was some sort of a, some sort of context as to where the project was, or where it was supposed to be, even in, even in things accomplished, it would clear up a lot, even before you get to the money.
About two weeks ago, during a council meeting on a special council work session on a Friday, before we actually had the vote on last Thursday, there was a meeting surrounding the entertainment center. And at that meeting, basically what the council did was they, they put that charge on our city manager. So where in the past, we've had a number of different staff members and one particular council member who has been running that project. From here on out, we have put the, basically onus of moving this project forward and handling the negotiations between the developer and the city onto Tommy Gonzalez. Because I agree with you. I think we had a lot of people who were involved in the project. We didn't have a whole lot of accountability. And so we have basically said, okay, moving forward, we need to have one person on this staff who is interacting with the developer and representing the city, and that's going to be our city manager. And I think what you're going to see from the city in the past, just from some of the quotes that she'd read in the paper, from the developers, they have had meetings outside city council meetings with council members, and information has been, you know, given to them before even council has gotten it. And what this council received during that meeting, that Friday meeting, from me at least, was that's going to end. We need to start working as a, as a whole unit, moving forward with what's in the best interest of the city and not what's necessarily in the best interest of the Los Cleanes group. You know, we're looking at spending your taxpayer money, and, you know, however we want to define it as not taxpayer money, I think a hotel occupancy tax, just by definition, is a tax, is tax money. But we need to look at what's in the best interest of the city and what the city can commit to based on the revenues and the return on investment. We are currently updating the numbers to make sure that the pro forma numbers that we're, you know, the expectations that we're putting out, were going to make sense. There was a question that, that came in, what's the funding potential for the entertainment complex in the Heritage District? Right now, the funding, the funding potential, it's, we are still kind of open. We haven't gotten a firm answer yet, but it's around 65 to 80 million dollars is what we're talking about. Now, the city has already spent 33 million dollars on the entertainment center, which is a little over 22 million to the developer outright, and then there's other costs that the city has had to bear, including our project management and our legal bills, as well as, you know, some other, some other issues that weren't brought up in the invoices from the Los Cleanes group. But moving forward, we're updating our numbers, and then we also agreed at the last city council meeting that we were going to appeal a court, a court decision that the AG's office brought. We're going to appeal it to the Supreme Court, which would try to go after future mixed beverage taxes. And that could be anywhere between 25 and 40 million dollars. So to answer the question on what's our bond capacity, we're, we are still in the, in the negotiating and the discovery phase of that. We're going to rely on the updated numbers, because it's all part and parcel. I think people don't realize that. When you ask what the funding numbers are, it's dependent on how many people we think are going to be able to go to the entertainment center, because we're basing all of the money, it's going to be cyclical. So if we build a much smaller center, then our bond capacity is a lot smaller, because the number of people that are going to be able to visit the venue is going to be smaller, therefore, you're not going to be able to make as much money. So, you know, we keep going back and forth, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? And I think what the city needs to do is stop looking at the developer to give us that number, because, you know, of course, they're going to want as much money as we can, as we can get. We need to figure out what the return on investment, what the legitimate numbers are going to be, and then moving forward, how much the city's willing to commit.
What about the issue that I raised about where we are with the project, as far as, is there some, is there some sort of monitoring process to know where we are on the task so far?
Currently, the, well, yeah, they're having, definitely, they're having weekly meetings with staff, but the council gave the, the command in January that no more money will be spent on this group unless the entire council votes on it. So moving forward, all of this will be conducted in public sessions. So again, you know, we, we have the vote already about, you know, expenditures that have already been paid out. Gerald and I did vote to have an audit. We were voted down 6-3. But, you know, there's, there's two issues at hand. One was looking at where we currently are and what, how we got there. And the other issue which we need to address is moving forward. You know, I think we've got a plan on the table, and everybody that looks at it loves it. They think it's great until you get the bill. And that's where you start seeing the dispute. You know, everybody would love to live in a 50 million dollar house until they actually have to pay for it. And, you know, this is a 250 million to 300 million dollar project, and it looks fantastic on paper, and then you have to pay for it. So I think, you know, so many people who are, are in love with the concept of having restaurants and having retail and having entertainment in that area are stuck on this one particular project, because quite frankly, we haven't given any other vision. So, you know, moving forward, we need to be able to look at how much we can afford and to be able to produce a product that- So, you know, moving forward, we need to be able to look at how much we can afford and to be able to produce a product that, one, we can actually build. You know, for four years now, we've been talking about this center and we haven't gotten anything. I want to actually see something on the ground. But two, that we can pay for and that user fees will be able to pay for. But the only way user fees are going to pay for it is if you have users out there.
And I would interject that the mayor did say in city council, and I agree with her, I mean, not at council meeting, but in work session. The only thing, this is a shovel-ready project, so the only thing that stands between this project and moving dirt is money. So if there's private investors that would come forward and invest in this project, they could start work tomorrow, is the way I understand it.
Well, what, what, what sort of obligation is there for the, for the Lost Cleanest Group to put forth that they have their end of the bargain? Is there something, they have a bond, they have?
Well, currently, the Lost Cleanest Group has until December thirty-first of this year, unless we give them a different date. But their, their contract right now extends through December of this year. At which point, we have to decide if they are able to bring their commitment to the table. And when we say their commitment, this has been a slight point of contention. It's not just them coming and saying, oh, hey, we have the ability to bring the money. It's here is our bank statement, the money's in the bank. And, you know, we've gone back and forth. So at this point in time, we've got till the end of December and we need to figure out where we are at that point.
Was the end of December an extension from what it was supposed to be before?
There's been four extensions.
Four extensions.
Five extensions, actually. We've re, we've re, yeah.
Town, town halls are great, thanks.
Thank you very much, Robert. Yes.
I'm John Fisher, twenty-five-year resident of City of Irving, licensed professional engineer and attorney and a member of P&amp;Z. I don't have any real compliments for the city council today. For those that are here for the first time, town hall meetings have been in the City of Irving for over twenty years. But I'm glad you're bringing them back. I'll fire whoever scheduled this one, we're only three of you who are here today. Okay, now, as to my concern, my issue is that the, the issue in which this community was abandoned by the City of Irving. It was the Northlake Project. Our former mayor ran on a platform of low density. And the City of Capel, when Billingsley, Crowe Billingsley came in here, raise your hand if you got yard signs from Crowe Billingsley, by the way.
I'm sorry, what?
Raise your hand if you got it, if you got funding by Crowe Billingsley in your, in your, okay, good. So.
Actually, you know what, Lucy Billingsley did give me five-hundred dollars my last election.
Oh, we go.
And you know what's the funny thing about that? If she and I were head.
Nothing funny about that, actually, for me.
She and I, she and I were head-to-head on the Billingsley Project over here at Northlake.
The Billingsley Project goes forward now, but she is, for quick history, it was a two-thousand Porsche, about three-hundred-and-sixty acres in seven-hundred-and-fifteen acres in two thousand and seven. In two thousand and eight, they had a settlement because the Capel, the City of Capel, bless their hearts, had the courage to stand up and the citizens voted to take them to court. City of Irving did nothing, left Valley Ranch high and dry, did nothing for us. As a result, what's going to happen is on a piece of property that's a fraction of the size of Valley Ranch, the exact same population of the size of Valley Ranch is going to be planted over there. And they're going to share with you the roads from MacArthur to get to six-thirty-five every day and the roads on Beltline to get to six-thirty-five every day because that's the only way they can get out. They're not going to come all the way out here. Some, some might leak out the Beltline and clog up thirty-five what's left of that. But the truth is that the services that we provided for the city, the roads are going to be crammed with Dallas city members. Now, who's paying for the water to get there? Is this going to be where the real water goes, you worried about a little rainwater? Who's buying that water? Because that's more than what we're using here. What about first responder? There's no city, we don't have a police department going in there, we don't have a fire department going in there. And yet the people that our kids are going to be playing with, won't have parklands, are going to be running over here to use our libraries, which are already full, that we paid for and the City of Dallas isn't paying for. They're going to be using all our city services and they're going to expect us to send the police and the fire department over there. Now, it already takes a while to get the police and fire department out here. Okay, I know, because I was holding a thief in the library the other day and it took him ten or fifteen minutes to get the guy to come pick him up from me. So the, the problem that I have, we, we have seen nothing. You think you got a problem, you think you're worried about some of these other issues around here, wait till you see the price of your house. When Billingsley develops that property, you got nothing. Wait till you try to get off MacArthur, wait till you try to get in and out of your library. And where, who, what are we doing now, since we've done nothing up to now? What is the City of Irving going to do about the first responder issue? Are you going to build another police department? Because you didn't do anything to annex land, I understand it's in the City of Dallas, but I think there's a special condition. I've talked to our attorneys, they've talked to the City of Dallas, we have no agreement to provide first responders.
So you've asked, you've asked about seven questions, let me go ahead and try to, to try to give a little bit of background on this.
Don't break it down to three. Water.
Water.
Okay.
Please.
City services like libraries and first responder.
And also, you brought up road, road and congestion.
Well, that's city.
Transportation issues. So for those of you, brief background. The Northlake area, which is, when I say Northlake, it's actually not Northlake College, but Northlake, which is between Beltline and MacArthur, just north of six-thirty-five. That area that used to be a power plant, it was TXU, was annexed to the City of Dallas fifty-seven, fifty-eight years ago. Basically, it is connected to Dallas by a two-mile extension cord that in some areas is ten feet wide. Grapevine Creek. What ended up happening was years ago, Billingsley Company purchased a large acreage of land that was on the south side of the lake. And they brought to the city that they wanted us to provide services, including water and sewer. And they were going to put in ten thousand multifamily units. I started having, and you're right, we have had town hall meetings before. I actually had the first town hall meeting when I was communications chairman in, right up the street at MacArthur. And we got a number of residents who came in and they talked about it. And I went down, it's funny, all the, the staffs that you brought up, I'm, I'm curious if you actually heard my speech in front of the Dallas City Council? Because every one of those I brought up. I said, you're talking about getting a population four times the size of Addison and, and an area one-eighth the size. And, you know, when you start looking at that high density, it's ridiculous. I was told, I was given the charge by the previous mayor to go ahead and put together a strategy of being able to cooperate with, within, obviously, the law and see what we could do. I came up with a three-pronged approach that was, let's just say, aggressive. That the rest of the council did not support. But it included going down to the state level and lobbying them, it included going to the Dallas citizens. Because let's face it, at the end of the day, we didn't get to vote on this. Our P&amp;Z didn't get to vote on this, our city council didn't get to vote on this. This was all conducted at the City of Dallas, their zoning commission, which I went to every meeting that this was discussed, and their Dallas city council. And basically, they were like, you know, this is an opportunity for us to, to make millions and millions of dollars. We're going to make one of our prized developers happy and it's not going to affect any of our citizens. So we're going to go ahead and, and, and vote on it. I brought up all the facts, you don't have the services. We already have the most horrible congestion, if you go up Beltline at six-thirty-five, that whole, that corridor, you know, at five o'clock at night, you guys know, it's awful. Coming up MacArthur between one-fourteen and six-thirty-five is horrible. I agree with you a hundred percent. We had an opportunity to do something and we failed. And trust me, I was the liaison, working with the Capel City Council and I know exactly what they went through and how far, how hard they fought and what they were relying on this council to provide and we did not do it. At this point in time, the Billingsley Project, that had, all the zoning has already been, has already happened. They are, they are well underway with their plans, they are obviously shovel-ready, they are ready to go. Which leads us to think, now, what do we have to do? And I brought up all your points, I said, what are you going to do when you have a fire? Our firemen obviously are going to respond. You know, you're not going to look at it and just go, okay, well, you're on that side of the line. We have regional co-ops that we are going to respond, but we have left them with a charge that they are going to have to do something. One of the things that they decided, that they agreed to do with, within their, their case with Capel is to build schools. Because that was a huge issue. I have met with, with Lucy Billingsley and she showed me the plans and how they're doing it step by step. They're going to provide retail, they're, they're providing, you know, a lot of amenities there, but that still is a concern. Transportation, you got me. We're, we're down right now at the transportation summit and we're saying, how do we get money for roads? Nobody wants to have any increases in their gas tax, nobody wants tollways, and nobody wants to have any additional property taxes going to it. So that, what do we do? You know, any area in Dallas, it's one of the worst in the country for, for increased roads, so what do we do? What we did do is we extended and we expanded the, the side road on six-thirty-five. If you've noticed that, where Walmart is, to the south of that, we have, and Billingsley did agree to help us pay for that to expand that road. As far as what we're doing with Beltline and MacArthur, what we were told, and I remember this quite clearly, there was already a D-rated intersections, so it was not their responsibility to make them better. So, not a good answer. As far as water and sewer, the City of Dallas is going to have to spend, I think it was eighty million dollars is what it ended up. There was some kind of a memo, eighty-six million dollars. They were still, still eighty-six million dollars short in, in order for them to be able to bring services to that little peninsula. And that's what they're doing. The City of Irving has said, we're not, we're not cooperating and we're not going to provide any water, we're not providing any sewer. We're not providing garbage services. And if we are, you know, are in a regional co-op with our police and fire, we will respond. But it is up to them to be able to provide the primary response. So I wish I could give you a much better answer. The fact is, is that we had our chance to fight it. I tried, I didn't get the support.
I don't think you've exhausted every opportunity. When you have first responder responsibilities to a community, these are citizens of the state of Texas and this transcends boundaries and city fights. And our state representative should be involved. It's possible for the state to require an annexation of property for a fire and police department, even if we have to man it and tax them for it. You know, that's whatever that possibility is, I don't know that we have to in the City of Irving provide access to our libraries to non, to non.
You know, there's, there's things that we could do, for example.
We could do things to the libraries that are right around here to.
We can charge. And actually, we're talking about doing that. Your, your taxes go to pay for the libraries.
That's right.
And yet anybody from Capel, and I don't know how many people here in Valley Ranch, a lot of people go to the Capel libraries and they're free for even Irving residents. Well, one of the things that we're talking about that we're probably going to do is charge out-of-city visitors to our libraries.
And our water parks, the same thing with our water parks.
We do that already, we do that already.
And the, the, but the thing is that we need to, I think the City of Irving should get up and talk to, because you're going to be providing the services. We're going to be paying the taxes, we already are, for, for way more than we should. But we're going to be continuing to provide fire and police or we're going to have citizens over there. You just can't have them live there and not provide it and saying, we'll show up. You talk to the, the police chief and see if he thinks that he's provided enough police force here to just cover Valley Ranch. It certainly wasn't planned to cover a community of twice his size and neither was the, the fire department. And our state has a responsibility to the citizens that transcends these rules.
Susan, do you have the, the slide that talks about? Is there anybody in the audience, by the way, raise your hand, that's unfamiliar with this subject? Nobody? These are a little bit of the facts about, specifically about this development. But we, everything right now is still in negotiations. I'd be curious to talk to you about this afterward, to find out if you've got any specifics that you're kind of hinting at but not really sharing. I'd be interested, but, you know, at this point in time, we're negotiating, the zoning has passed.
They have agreed to build a fire facility and a police facility. They have been negotiating with Capel to provide that service. They did ask us about it, we, we told them no. So they, they know that they will be building a facility, both the fire and police. They're just trying to negotiate with someone to man it rather than themselves. Probably within the last eight to ten months. When they started to look at actually doing the work, we had a big meeting, actually, they got the council of governments involved. And we actually had some challenges because they wanted us to provide the water and sewer and wanted to hold up some of our transportation dollars based on us negotiating with them for the water and sewer. And as, what came out of all that was the fact that they would build the two buildings and we would not either supply the people nor would we supply the water and sewer. So I can, that's, I don't know if you were aware of that, Mayor, we had that decision about discussion.
We can't hear you, wait until you get to the microphone, please.
The City of Irving recently, as the nineteen-nineties realized, that it had upside-down statistics for multifamily homes and single-family homes back in nineteen-ninety, in the early nineteen-nineties. We had sixty percent multifamily, forty percent single homes, when the rest of the communities around the country try to have the opposite, the opposite. What we're going to have here is Mexico City, right here in Valley Ranch. This is going to be the highest density, select population anywhere in the state of Texas and out, far beyond anything of this size anywhere that I could find in the state of Texas for this kind of a density. Now, what we, what we can do is take a look at the remaining areas and homes we have that's not developed in Valley Ranch. And because our comprehensive plan failed, our comprehensive plan failed to comprehend what might happen at Northlake. Didn't consider it at all. So we went very high density in Valley Ranch. We all know, it's called, been called Apartment Valley and there's tons of multifamily here. Okay, it's bad enough and it's going to be way worse very soon. What can we do? Can we look at what we can do with the remaining vacant undeveloped property here? And there's not much left, I've already looked into this, there's not much left. But I would certainly try to put a moratorium on any construction in here.
What you're looking at is we created TODs, which are Trans-Oriental Development Districts in the City of Irving. So that if it's around a dart station, there is the possibility that they're going to try to have more density in those areas. But in other areas of the city, we are really trying to focus on being, on building single-family homes. And to the point where, I mean, there's, there's been zoning cases that I voted down for single-family homes, including that area Emerald Valley that's over by Office Depot and Walmart. I just thought that was a bizarre area to put single-family homes right in the middle of, of commercial retail. But I got to tell you, I mean, people are buying them, a lot of people are buying them. And there are three-hundred thousand plus, you know, to five-hundred thousand dollar houses there. But we are, we are looking at ways of being able to take open areas and make them single-family homes. That was always my priority. You know, there's not a multifamily case that, that I can, I can justify. We've got sixty-five percent of all of our housing options, by the way, are rental units. So even the sixty-four, and there's a difference because we're also considering single-family homes that are, that are not owner-occupied with that. So that statistic does shoot up from your sixty percent. But I agree with you, we need to have more single-family homes. Because the more multifamily that you have, the more apartments that you have, and call it what you will, multifamily, whatever, I call it apartments. The more you have, the more issues you're going to have with providing city services, the more issues you're going to have in our schools, the more congestion you're going to have. And, you know, all you have to do is look at some of the, the schools that we've built in Irving. I mean, Jackie Townsend Elementary, which is, it's on, it's on Beltline. That school, from the day that it was built, was too small. They had to expand it. And the reason being is there was a number of apartments right in that immediate area that we didn't have a good idea of how many people lived per unit. So the assumptions that we made based on norms were incorrect and we've had to expand it. So I, I, I agree with your position, I understand your position. It is an issue, we're going to have to face that issue. Our, our abilities, as far as I was concerned, you might know more than I do. But as, as far as I was concerned, we've talked to our attorneys, we've talked to our, our staff to find out what we can do. And it's fairly limited. At this point in time, it's fairly limited. But, and the most that we can do right now is continue to work with the developer, continue to support Capel. I mean, Capel, I don't know how many of you know it, but, but they actually ended up purchasing, what happened was this small area was the original parcel that was purchased. Then the developer decided they were going to purchase all of the land, once the power plant got mothballed. They were going to purchase all of it. And their intention was to fill in the lake very similar to Valley Ranch and have a canal system. And then use all the land for more development. And Capel, you know, their residents were very supportive, they had a bond election, which agreed that they were going to pay for a certain percentage of the property, including a lot of the lake property, so that they couldn't fill it in. Now, some of the lake is still going to be filled in, but a large percentage of it's not. And we can thank Capel for that because they purchased that, that land. Funny thing is, and this is kind of how this all comes back, they had eighty-five to eighty-seven percent on that vote that supported using tax dollars to purchase property on that, that TXU land. So that they could do what they wanted to do and not, and prevent it from being developed. Two years, two years later, they had a tax increase, which they told all of their residents that they were going to have. As a result, specifically of having to spend this money on, on buying this property, two years later, they had over three-hundred residents. And to give you an idea, Capel has what, less than ten percent our population? Which is similar to having three thousand residents come down to City Hall. All wearing red t-shirts saying, don't, don't increase our taxes. And so the city council ended up not increasing them that year. So it's not an excuse, but I, I did think it was somewhat of a good case study. Any other questions?
Mayor and council participants that are here, Joe Mapes, couple of questions, please. I've requested over the last sixty, ninety days that there might be a financial town hall here in the city. The possibilities of that, I've asked that maybe Max DePlante or Brett Starr conduct that. I wonder if that's on the schedule? We're approaching budget. We're approaching budget season. There's a lot of people that, financial matters are of greater concern to more of us today than they've been in years, in our lifetime, probably, based on what's going on, city of Irving, state of Texas, US, and worldwide. And prior to the budget retreat, it certainly would be interesting if that could take place. I wonder if it's been planned, or if not, why not?
I've been talking.
Well, I wish Joe Philip was here because he could, I know he's been a strong proponent of that. And actually, I don't know if there has, there was something proposed that we're going to have some type of interaction during the budget retreat with the public. And I don't, to be honest, I don't know how that netted out. I don't know. I think Susan may have some information on that for you possibly afterwards, or, but there's going to be some type of interaction with the public and the council. But I don't know exactly how that's going to work. If it's going to be phone calls, if it's going to be, I see Brett Starr getting up and approaching, so he's going to bail me out.
What I've advocated is a opportunity for an exchange, much like a town hall meeting.
Yeah. That will not happen during the budget retreat?
Prior to the budget retreat.
It probably won't happen prior to the budget retreat because the budget retreat's next week.
I know.
But...
But yet, the request has been out...
But for the budget retreat, that's the first time that the city council's actually seeing the numbers. We're not passing the budget for another month. So what will probably happen, and Brett, correct me if I'm wrong, what will probably happen is we'll have something like that after the budget retreat, but before we pass the budget.
All right. Yeah, we had talked about doing that interactive town hall, and once these three town halls were proposed, we talked with Councilman Philip about rolling the financial town hall into this. We felt that with three town halls being scheduled, there just wasn't enough time to have a separate town hall for that. And so we figured any questions that came up during these town halls that related to the budget, we could answer them at that time. We also have to ask the budget guy on the website, and we're answering questions that way. And also, we're looking at the budget retreat. As you know, it's like a council work session, where citizens can be present, but there's not, there's not been an interactive component to that. So what we're trying to do is bridge the gap, so it's not a town hall meeting during retreat, but there's also, there's opportunity for people who are in the audience or watching on ICTN, or could also call in and provide questions. We'll have several points during the retreat where we'll stop the presentations and go through the list of the questions that have been submitted, questions and comments. So the council has the opportunity to get feedback from the residents as retreat goes on. And what we wanted to do is we wanted to make sure that it was fair to not only the people who attended, but also those who are watching live on ICTN, which is the first time it's ever been broadcast on ICTN, so we're doing that as well. So we're going to have a phone number on the crawl at the bottom of ICTN so you can call in and get your information taken down. We'll also have an email address available, so that those three mechanisms, people who are in the audience, people who are on the phone, or can email in to ask questions or give comments to the council, and we'll have two or three points during the retreat where we'll review those with the council, and the council can debate those issues prior to going forward with the remainder of the program.
Perfect.
Thank you, Brett. I knew there was something planned like that, but I didn't know all the logistics.
Great, and I think that's a super opportunity for citizens, taxpayer participation. I know one of the comments made in the last electoral process here in the city was the amount of debt that the city had obtained. We'd moved from roughly $150 million of bond debt to something in excess of $500,000 in bond debt.
500 million.
Million, I'm sorry. And to get any questions answered about any of that, there's no forum, there's no opportunity. Speaking of the budget guy, I think it's a huge, great opportunity. I requested about 10 days ago some information on that. Unless it was posted today, it has not yet been posted. Granted, it was a complex question. But we can't discuss budget matters here. Let's talk about the debt of the city for the remainder of the town hall meeting? No, it's not the forum to do that. Where is the forum, and when will it exist? Just a question and a request. But the request for this has been out there 90 days, 120 days, to do something of this type, and there's no activity in that direction. There's a lot of us that are vitally interested in the financial affairs of the city. Let me segue to a totally different point, please, for a moment. Back to the discussions of the entertainment district. There are a great many of us who are very concerned about the electoral processes that have taken place in the city, particularly in the last two election cycles, with the contributions that have come directly from developers, as well as the contributions that have flowed through public sector unions here in the city to support specific candidates. We feel, or I feel, that some of our city council members are co-opted in their decision-making processes. That was evident in the most recent council meeting votes on several issues. And it has been proposed that an ethics policy be developed by the city. We have, as I understand, no current ethics policies whatsoever for the elected officials, and minimal for the staff of the city. I would be a proponent of a very strong ethics policy to eliminate some of these processes that have gone on in the past. We're suffering greatly today financially and otherwise because of the like of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Drew. Now, let me clarify. The city staff does have a fairly strong and comprehensive ethics policy. There's also a current ethics policy for the city council. But the interesting thing about it is it was written long ago, and it's more of an idea, there's no way to enforce it. So we do have one, but there are a lot of things listed on that ethics policy that we don't, that we don't follow. And it's all, if we want, it's all voluntary right now. What I propose doing, and forgive me, I know that you might have been asking these things for like the last 90 days, I've been in office for six weeks, so just, but one of the things that...
She's been busy.
One of the things that we have talked about, and we actually saw the first draft of it, I think it was earlier today, from our city attorney, is a comprehensive ethics policy. And what this would entail is, you don't take money. If you are a candidate or you're a city council member, if you've got people who've got work in front of the city, business in front of the city, and you are in any way, shape, or form able to give them money or to give them votes, you don't take money, period. That, to me, is common sense. The second thing that we're talking about doing is if you are someone who appears before the city council in any way, shape, or form gets paid for cases that get brought before the city council, so you are in effect working for people who are, have the ability to have influence on city council members, you have to register as a lobbyist. So we, you know, it's great, "Take me to California for a weekend, talk to me about your project." Uh-uh. That, to me, is the exact same thing as getting, as getting a campaign contribution. So what we're talking about is if you are a lobbyist, not only do you have to register, but if you spend coffee, if you buy us a coffee for $2.17, you have to actually submit that. I think that just makes it a lot more transparent. The other thing that we're talking about, including in it, is just simple, I think we all think of common sense. And I know that it was a shock to me personally, but I can also tell you it was a shock to some of the other council members who are not here tonight, the amount of money that was spent on the last campaign. And the fact that one of the candidates received over $1 million from somebody who was in the position of asking for the city to, had already gotten over $22 million from the city. I know that that offended, it was not just me. And we all thought that that was common sense, that you'd never do that. And every single time we saw the Dallas Morning News article come up, or a campaign finance report, all of us kind of shook our, not all of us, but some of us just kind of shook our heads, and we're just astounded. So apparently, what's common sense to some of us is not common sense to others. We need to have a policy. And here's the thing, the policy can't just be a guide, the policy has to be enforced. But I'm going to tell you right now, there are people who are far more involved in city politics than the majority of people in this room, who are going to be lobbying very, very hard on council members up here not to pass that kind of an ethics policy. So it's, you know, I will bring the policy forward, I will work with my council to get it done, I will work with staff on getting something comprehensive that has teeth that we can move forward on. But what it's going to take is a strong public push for this type of policy to be voted on and to get one, two, three, four, five minimum votes. Yes, Drew?
Thank you. This last election, Mayor, was about some of these very same circumstances, particularly in the mayoral race. And the citizens, to a great degree, the voters, the ones that chose to vote, have spoken in a lot of these regards. I'd suggest a couple of things. One, there probably needs to be a committee, the committee, whatever, of citizens and taxpayers that get involved in the suggestions of the ethics policies for the city, possibly, something outside of the structure of the city. I think maybe former mayors. Maybe. Let them come and choose and participate if they want.
They have to go there, really?
Wouldn't that be interesting?
It would be interesting. I think we just got through four months of interest.
Well, sure it would. But just a...
Funny. We've got other people that have got questions.
One other thing. Effectively, we have paid lobbyists sitting on our city council today. Think about it.
Did you want to add anything?
No. Fine. Hi, my name is Brendan Burrells. I'm a business owner in South Irving. I'm a Texas resident for 30 years, although I don't sound like one. My topic of conversation is crime reduction. I work, there's an ordinance in the city mandating that all apartment complexes have to do background checks on all of their tenants. And this ordinance has been in effect for two years, and it's been hugely successful. City of Irving is now experiencing historic low-crime statistics, and this program's been accredited with part of the contributing factor to the low crime that's presently in Irving, I think, for seven years successfully. This ordinance that mandates that apartments do background checks on their tenants is supported by the residents of the apartments, they love it. It's supported by the apartments who have to do it to their tenants, and it's loved by the police department. But there's a problem. The problem is, the ordinance is tied to some kind of code enforcement structure that says if you live in an old apartment complex, you've got to do these background checks. But if you live in a newer, modern apartment complex, you don't have to do these background checks. And I can basically testify to you that the apartments in the south part of town, or the poorer parts of town, are refusing to do background checks on their tenants and allowing the criminals, and I mean rapists, child molesters, drug dealers, they're allowing them literally to stay because literally the apartments across the street will have a higher rating, and they don't have to perform these background checks. So if they do do the background checks, they lose their tenants and the criminals move across the street. But they generally don't do the background checks because they don't want to lose their paying tenants. Now, all I have to say is, my job is in that arena, and the apartments refuse to do the background checks on the tenants because if they do, they'll lose a large portion of their tenants. And they're saying it's discrimination against the poor, or they're saying it's discrimination against Hispanics, specifically on the southern part of Irving. And I'm wondering, I'm trying to bring it to your attention, a program that's so successful, why can't we just have the same rules for everybody? If you live in an apartment complex, you've got to do a background check. But not if you live in a poor apartment complex, you've got to do a background check. Or if you live in a Hispanic neighborhood, you've got to do a background check. But if you live in a, well, anywhere other than that neighborhood I mentioned, you don't have to do it. And literally, as a result, the criminals are still living in the poor parts of town, and the criminals who are forced to leave just move into a better part of town. But they don't leave Irving.
Let me, it's not just the background check. Basically, what the city of Irving did was they, they had, we rank the apartments, and it's based on a number of factors. Not just the age of the apartment complex, I don't even think that enters into the equation, but how many code enforcement violations they have, how many police calls they get, the amount of crime that happens. It's not just the age...
Sprinkler systems.
Sprinkler systems. I mean, there are definitely code, but what we found was it's not a particular area of town, because, by the way, one of the things that you said was at the south area. I hate to tell you guys in Valley Ranch, but you've got two apartment complexes in Valley Ranch that were some of the worst calls in the city. So it's not just, it's not just, you know, in one sector of the city because it's newer or older. There were a number of factors that went into it. And so what we decided to do is we were going to rank them, I think it was like one, two, three, and four. And the ones were, basically, they were taking care of their properties, they were respectful, they were respectful of the city codes and of traffic issues, crime statistics. And then we said, "Okay, you are already doing your job." Then we looked at the twos, and there were, some of them were older properties, and that, the twos actually covered a lot of the older properties, but again, they didn't need the concern or the amount of attention or city resources. Then we started looking at the threes and the fours. And the threes and the fours is where we found that we actually had legitimate, legitimate concerns. And the fours especially. And so you're right. What we did with those threes and fours is if you, if you had this issue, this issue, this issue, and this issue, you were given a score. And because of that, it wasn't just background checks, but it's also training, it's also submitting to, training for your, for your staff. There's a number of things that, not just the background checks.
Everything you just said is true and correct. But the real, in the real world, you will have a number two sitting next to a number three, literally door by door, and the criminal will just literally just move across the street. But really, what happens in the real world is the number threes won't obey the law because they're scared of losing all of their tenants who cross the street and go over the number two.
And that's an enforcement issue. I mean, we can, we can create as many ordinances as we want, but we're not going to enforce them, there's an issue.
Is this the right place to ask for some enforcement on that? Because there's little to none.
We can speak to the chief, because I think what you're suggesting is you do criminal background checks on every tenant in every apartment, one through four. And, I mean, obviously, that would be more manpower. We could ask him what, what he could...
No manpower, no.
Well, maybe not. I mean, I don't know. But we can certainly bring that to his attention.
He would love it. The problem is it's code enforcement. The police chief and the police department would love to see these rules.
By the way, code enforcement reports up to the police department.
Agreed, but they're used to inspecting wires and plumbing and litter and trash, and it's tough for them to start.
It's a good suggestion. What we tried to do was to prioritize based on need. And we found out that it's not just one simple portion of the equation, it was the whole equation that we defined by priority.
But it's everybody's observation, the tenants, the residents, the apartments, the police department. It's a massive success. Massive.
Appreciate you, I appreciate that feedback. And it's definitely something that we can look to expand. Again, again, and you're going to hear this familiar theme, it's a matter of money, you know, it's a matter of cost.
I don't agree with that, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, dear. I'm Joyce Howard. I live on Colony Drive in Irving. And to follow up with what the gentleman just said, I'd like to see background checks, criminal checks on council members who are running for candidates and for school, too.
Trust me, my opponent did that, I'm sure, eight times over.
No, I'm talking about, a couple of years ago, we had absolute criminals running for school board, and I'm not quite sure of why we don't have some sort of minimum specifications. You know, one of the guys was out on parole for child molesting or something. So, you know, we really do need to do that, sorry. That wasn't really why I stood up, the gentleman reminded me. One of the things that I would like to know is who vetted the contract with Los Colinas Corporation when it was first signed? Do we know which city attorney, what person, staff, did that? How did they let, and this is like a three or four question, how did they let it go through without checks and balances and a perk sheet to say, "This is what you're going to accomplish before you get your next check," and those sorts of things? And have we done that yet? I don't think so.
Who, 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 have we done which?
Have we, have we included checks and balances and perk sheets? You said a while ago, I think, that they haven't been paid since January, LCG?
They have not accrued any additional expenses that this council would write a check for since that time. We have written checks, but for no, for no additional costs, they were already approved of. So any future cost invoices that we receive in any way, shape, or form attributed to this project has to go before the city council. Even, even expenses, by the way, that the city council wants to have done. So attorneys, we're going to have our numbers updated. The numbers being updated, by the way, was less than 25,000.[1789.58] So technically, as mayor, I could have just written that authorization to do it, but anything regarded, this entertainment center project, is going to have to get a vote of the majority of the city council.
Super. The other thing I'd like to know is, with the 65 to 80 million dollars that you're saying the council or the city bonds might be able to support, will that include the 33 million that's already been spent?
That, that question is still out there. That question is still out there. We don't have an answer for that yet.
Should be, that's my question. Also, I haven't given up on an audit yet. I know that there's still probably opposition on the council that we do an audit, but, you know, that could change in the future, and I'm still getting signatures on a petition. So if anybody here would like to sign it, that'd be great. And I would like to say that I'm not sure how we think we're going to get, let me ask this as a question. How long do you think it will take us to go to Supreme Court to try to get the taxes out of the hotel tax that might be needed to support a bigger bond issue? Anybody have any clue?
It can take 12 to 18 months. If we push it and try to expedite, expedite it, it could be earlier than that. We don't know. You know, we, we can appeal it, and then we just have to wait. We have to wait.
You know, a person that I know has gone through what the city attorney said the other night at the council meeting, about there being a 50-50 chance of getting through to the Supreme Court and a 50-50 chance of maybe having one...
One in 10.
One in 10, that's right.
One in 10 of getting picked for the Supreme Court.
Well, I just want to make a point that that's like the worst lottery in the world. It's about a 95% bet on failure.
That was my number.
It's only a 5% bet for success. So that's $200,000, basically, being spent for nothing, is the way I see it, but anyway. And one other question, not that we don't have plenty on our plates right now, but when do you suspect it might be appropriate to start reviewing the historical district downtown and maybe turning some of that property loose to other developers who may be able to get money, since obviously Mr. McDougal has hit a brick wall and can't get funding?
We are actually bringing that project back for review during the budget retreat next week. So that's been scheduled for at least an hour-long look. I have met with Mark McDougal, who is Delbert McDougal's son, and we were very clear, we need to see things happening. Again, we've been talking about this for years. When are we going to hit deadlines, and when are we going to be accountable for those deadlines? And then what are the penalties that are associated with those deadlines? And I know that Councilman Ferriss has also been working on, with, with a committee that's, that's responsible for kind of getting the communications out, so I want to make sure he has an opportunity to answer some of those.
Well, we want to make it clear to everyone that these projects are open to any developer you know, and we encourage you very strongly to, if you know anybody that's in the development business, this isn't an exclusive deal with Delbert McDougal and his companies. This is, if you know people in the restaurant business, if you know people that, that have worked in Plano or Grapevine or any other areas, there is land for sale, it is open, city staff is promoting that concept. Mr. McDougal himself would welcome people to come in that have funding and so forth. So definitely put the word out, we, you know, I think Irving deserves it, and we definitely want to promote it.
Okay, one additional question or two, maybe?
We've got, we've got 10 more minutes, and we've got another question here.
Could I do one real quick? One real quick.
Two questions.
I understand that when people inquire of the city, they're sent to Mr. McDougal. Mr. McDougal then wants to receive a commission on the sales, and that pushes the value of the property in the historical district beyond what can legitimately be developed, and that's something that needs to be addressed. Hopefully, we can do that in the budget meeting.
Great, thank you. Corley.
Okay, I'm short. My question is that we're going forward with the lawsuit against Attorney General Abbott for the beverage tax, correct? We agreed on that? And their main argument, the city councils, was that there's a House bill that they're going to use. It did, from what I understand, it's in the Senate, and it did not pass. So if we are waiting 12 to 18 months on that, and that bill didn't pass, is the project just going to be on hold the whole time?
We're basically trying to create a precedent, so that if we bring this project forward, we create the law. So if you have a Supreme Court, and you know there's two ways of getting laws passed in this country, you can either have a bill, or you can have a lawsuit, which creates a precedent. And so I think what they're, we're trying to do is go after, with this specific project, beverage taxes, which historically have not been able to have, and Charles, correct me if I'm wrong, but have not had the discretion of, at the city local level, to define where they're going to be used in the future. And I think what they're, they're trying to do with this lawsuit is to say, this city, with this project, has the ability to define future mixed beverage taxes to go to this project. And where you saw the Attorney General say, no, 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 that's the state's rights. That's what the lawsuit's about. So that's, that's what they're, it's, they're trying to create a precedent that other cities can use, which is why we did get some support from other cities who, hey, we want to have that, that authority, too. We want to be able to define it. The problem is, is that right now, at the state level, they're having all sorts of budget issues. And you're talking about taking away a potential source of revenue from something that they might want down, down the road. So, you know, I, this was an 8-1 vote, I voted against pursuing the appeal. I thought it was a 1 in 10 shot that we're going to be picked by the, by the Supreme Court. It was a 50-50 shot that we'd even win it if we did. To me, it was 12 to 18 months out, the developer doesn't have the money, we're going to have to change the scope of the project anyway, and we're sticking to ourselves, to this particular developer, moving forward. And by the way, this project was already kind of shaky by forcing it to be a quote, hotel project, though it was a performance hall. So if we really want to go after this case, why not do it with a project that wasn't as controversial and have a much stronger base? That was, that was mine. But again, it was an 8-1 vote, so I want to make sure that I allow you an opportunity to, to defend perhaps why, why you vote on the other way. And I don't want to put you on the spot, I don't mean to do that.
I guess I voted in favor of the lawsuit based on that we did have an agreement. I felt that we, we did need to move forward based on, on that fact. Obviously, I voted the other way on, on the audit, because I thought that that was a way for everybody to put all the cards on the table, get all the liars in the same room, so to speak, and clear the air. So I thought that was, that was a good compromise. You know, I'm, I'm putting faith in the developer. You know, you're saying you're honorable people, you're going to hold up to your end of the deal. And then I voted again in favor of the audit, because I said, this is a chance for everybody to come clean, put, seal the deal, you know, validate it, build a bridge between those who are for it and against it, because many of the people that were for the audit were, or are also for the project. They really liked the concept, and I was, I was listening to my constituents, and I voted that way, so.
And on that difference, the money, if we don't win the lawsuit, the beverage tax, is the developer automatically going to have to cover that additional cost? Or are we going to have to, as citizens, make up that difference somehow?
Not necessarily, no. Uh-uh.
Well, I'm sorry, make up the difference between what and what?
The difference of if we don't get the beverage tax, the 40 million dollars, the developer...
You know, that was, that was the point that I tried to bring up last week. I said, you know, the city of Irving has to define how much it is comfortable committing to this project, period. And to me, it should be, again, take emotion out of it, and take desire to get a project out of it, and look at the numbers. You have an equation, you know what the ROI is going to be, based on what, what the numbers you pump in. So based on that, what is the city of Irving willing to commit? And as far as I'm concerned, if the city is willing to commit, let's just say 50 million, because we kind of threw that out, how we come up with that 50 million should not be the concern of the developer. The city is coming up with X amount of money of public funds, the developer is responsible for the rest. And I think what you're seeing, and I don't want to throw any NFL owners under the bus, but I think what you're seeing is something very similar to a very neighborhood city where, okay, well, I can get this money, and this is mine, and I can get this money, and it's mine, and I can get this money, and it's mine. It's public dollars that we're putting in. And then there's private sector, which is why they call it a public-private partnership, because there should be some kind of a partnership. Where if the private side can figure out how to get access to 27 different public funds, it's no longer a private project. So as far as my, my position on that is, if we get, get the 45 million, to me, that's part of the 50 million that we're comfortable committing. It's not in addition to. Now, I can guarantee you, I guarantee you, that is not the popular opinion on this council.
Yes, and my question, then my concern is, if we don't win, we have agreed to pay that, and the citizens are going to have to come up with that.
We haven't agreed to pay anything yet. We need to get it in writing. Originally, what this, this project was going to be was much smaller, and the city's proportion of commitment was 50 million. Within a couple of years, that proportion went to 200 million, and the developer's contribution went to 50 million. What you've seen, and, and some, by the grace of God, what you've seen is this council has said, no, 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 no. We're going to move it back the way it originally was, and we're going to commit approximately 50 million, and we're going to request that the developer commit a lot more. So right now, we are updating our numbers, we are getting advice from our, our financial advisors, and we're reevaluating what we're willing to commit. And then once that's done, we owe it to our partners, the developers, to give them a letter stating, this is what we can give. And by, by the way, our expiration date for this contract is in December. At that point in time, this is what we're looking for you to be able to bring to the table. And they've got options. I mean, they can decide that if we're bringing such a small, a much smaller amount than they originally, I can't say originally, but what, from what, a month ago, they were counting on, they have the opportunity to decrease the scope of the project. You know, they don't want to bring 200 million to the table. I mean, they've taken four years, and they still haven't brought 50 million, which is what they're originally supposed to do. So, you know, they have an opportunity to, to change the scope. Now, what that does is, all of the money that we've spent so far on drawings and plans and all of that, more or less, we're going to waste a large amount of that, because they're going to have to reevaluate the scope. They've got the opportunity to do that, they can walk away. Or the third thing they can do is say, yeah, we have an opportunity to bring more money to the table. But we owe it to them to give them a final number, which we have not done. We're still, we're still negotiating that right now.
But you're not making that number just based also on the hot, on the hotel beverage tax? Okay, that's my concern.
Thanks.
So, hello, Mayor.
And by the way, this will be, it looks good, but we're, we have three more minutes left, so this will be the last question.
I'll make it quick. Lorraine Taylor, I live on South O'Connor in the Heritage District, and I thank both of y'all for being here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'll get closer. As you know, my concern is the Heritage Crossing redevelopment, and one of the things that I've been pushing for is a financial review of that project, and I'd like to see that go forward. You mentioned that y'all would be discussing it in the budget retreat. Is that open to the public?
Absolutely. It's not only open to the public, we encourage you to come, but it's also going to be televised live. You can also go on, on demand on our, on our website and pull it down, too.
Okay, so I'll get the details for that later. Then my other two questions would be, a general question, how you see the project going forward, because of course, I'd like to see it go forward, even though I think what's happened already needs a review. And then the other thing, you mentioned talking about the Billingsley Project, about not many multifamily projects that you could support, and yet, that's what they're proposing for a lot of the Heritage District, and how you see that working there. And I'll just sit down and listen to you.
What was the exact question?
So the question was, one, are we going to have an audit? And she's, she's wondering about whether we're going to have an audit. Two, whether or not we're going to support multifamily housing in the Heritage District, or what we think about that regarding the Heritage District. And was there a third question?
Well, and just how you see it going forward.
How we see it going forward.
Well, as I understand, when you talk to developers, and I'm no developer, you, they really want the density in the Heritage Crossing area to justify some of the investments and development that we're asking people to do, that we would love for people to come down there to do or build, which, you know, whether it be putting in, you know, a coffee shop, a nice coffee shop, or a nice restaurant, or things like that. Now, a lot of the people I know say that, hey, if you build something, then the people will come, in that order. But unfortunately, the, the investors want the perfect storm. They want, they want to, they want a sure thing. They want to come in, and they want to put in a 10,000-square-foot restaurant or what have you, and the people are going to be there, and they're going to be there on Saturday night and waiting in line to come to the, and so on and so forth. That's what, that answers, or that may attempt to answer that part of the question.
Well, and I'll just throw out that, you know, they talk about the investment that they've done, but then there's also been charges, which would be covered by the review, if we could ever get it, that they've overpaid down there. So do we, you know, are we responsible for their investment if they've overpaid?
Yes.
If you'd be sure answer to that question is...
I know we co-signed for it, but do we need to make sure that they make future profits?
If you've got, if you've got a developer, and there's been suspicion based on, on people, assuming, you know, assumptions that people have made, to me, if I was a developer, and I knew that I had all my i's dotted and my t's crossed, I would say, open it up. Look at it. Prove, prove that, that you are everything that you've said, and that you've done everything that you've said you've done. But the fact is, is that the way that this, the agreement has been made with, with McDougal Development, is that the city is backing the loan. So McDougal has authority to go purchase properties, and some of those properties, they have spent a lot of money on, more than are on the books for. And at the end of the day, he does have the right to be able to step away from that, and the city takes on that loan. Now, the city would own the property as well, but the city also takes on the loan. So moving forward, I've already talked to the city manager about the, the prospect of an audit. I have not yet talked to the council. I figured, let's get one vote down. Let's see how many, how many arrows I get in my, in my, in my back for that one, but, you know, let's, let's figure that out next. Like I said, we are bringing that back to be discussed during the budget retreat, and for both of these projects. And not, and by the way, I don't want to limit to these. The Entertainment District, Texas Stadium, Water Street, Heritage. We keep, there's a pattern here. We keep seeing pictures, we keep being sold on ideas, and, and they all sound so great. And we, we really want to see them, and the problem is, is that we start getting involved, and we start getting involved, and then we get so much of our time invested in our money and resources investment, that we don't want to step back when it's not working. And again, taking a motion out of it, to me, you set up deadlines. You set up timeframes, and you look, it's all evidence-based. You get to this date and time, and this has not yet happened, there's a penalty for it, just like you would do in a business. And I understand the economy, I mean, let's face it, the, the government is not alone in suffering, and developers are not alone in suffering this economy. You know, I'm, and you are all right up there with it. You know, we've all had setbacks, and, and all of our 401Ks or any money that we had in the stock market has taken a hit. We get that, but it doesn't stop development, it doesn't stop us from progressing. We can't. So you asked, you know, what was my idea of what's going on in the Heritage District, or what should be going on in the Heritage District? We want to see development, period. I want to see it now, instead of just talking about it. We've spent a lot of time, we've spent a lot of money, and the longer that you don't have anything going on, the more suspicion that gets raised. We need to move forward on it. Now, whether or not that's, you know, the next, the next step in that is coming up with a vision plan of, of what we all see as an idea, and get, get people's buy-in in that. But at some point in time, we're going to have to allow the developer to actually start developing. And to me, the one way to do that is to open it up, have an audit, have everybody look at it. And that would buy them, what, six months of trust? And that should be enough time for them to actually do something. What do you think?
I think that's good.
Thank you very much.
We do have a lot of, we do have questions. I want to make sure that people who in the audience who want to ask questions, who have got an opportunity. We do have some that are written. I think most of these, many of these, we had answered already, but we're going to give these to staff, and we're going to make sure that you get follow-up. I really appreciate all of you for coming and for standing up and for being interested to be here tonight. And I know it's, it's an evening, and nobody likes to necessarily spend it this way, and we're a little bit hot back here. So if we're sweating, it's not because of the questions, it's the lights.
And before we end off, I want to thank Beth for not leaving.
And I want to thank Gerald for sticking up here with me. I also wanted to, there's some numbers, if you've got questions going on in the city, the customer service number for the city is 972-721-2411. So if people have questions, and they just want to find out, or they've got a concern, that's the best number.